To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Misty, will you please call the roll?
Marlene Kane, here. Ray Echathy.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Martin Meyer. Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards. Allison Ritter-Bush.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum. Again, I'd like to remind everyone, as we do communicate tonight, please remember to speak into your mics loudly so that all the audience and the camera can pick this up. I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, and we'd like to amend the agenda to include an executive session for legal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with an amendment, an executive session for legal.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with executive session, add it as an amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I remind the council, as we go through the agenda, if there's any item that is a conflict of interest, please notify the remainder of the council as we discuss that topic. You also have in your packages minutes from the September 4th council meeting. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 4th council meeting?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the September 4th council meeting minutes. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Next in the agenda are the bills in between for $155,454.23. I'd ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a- I'd make a motion to approve the bills in between for $155,454.23.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve those bills in between. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the bills in between signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have before you in your packages current claims for $33,815.19. We'd appreciate a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims of $33,815.19. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, we have with us this evening Frank Mayner, the Fall River County Emergency Manager, former Deadwood Bear, and a pretty doggone good basketball player. And I know because I had the opportunity to play against him. If you'd come up Frank, or come up to the microphone, Frank, and update us on the emergency operations plan, please.
Basically, what I'm going to be here to discuss is I want to update you on the local emergency operation plan, or better known as the LEOP. And the second plan that I want to talk about is pre-disaster mitigation, or PDM plan. The PDM plan, the city has a copy of this, and today I gave Misty a live copy CD for both of the plans. I'm going to address the PDM plan initially. That plan was written in 2014 with input from all of the various communities within Fall River County. And as such, we had public meetings for input into potential projects that we could handle through mitigation. One of the primary ones that's always listed is generators for your water supplies, for your sewer treatment plants, some of your critical infrastructure buildings, and various other sort of things for repetitive flooding issues. Anyway, as we get into this, this plan runs on a five-year cycle, and we've been in contact with Black Hills Council of Government. They will be the contracting agent that we will do to do the update, and we'll probably get started on this sometime after the first of the year because, as I said, it's a five-year plan that expires next year. And when we get ready to have that, start with the process, we will be having public meetings, and I strongly encourage people to show up. And we look at historic data, what incidents have happened, what can we do to mitigate potential hazardous areas, you know, to protect the property and citizens. Any questions about the PDM?
Any questions, council?
The second plan I'm going to talk about is the local emergency operation plan. Many years ago, before 9/11, those were put on the website so people could go in and look at them. Tells you where to evacuate to, tells you where all of our critical infrastructures are. Kind of gave a pathway for all of the bad guys to know exactly what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. So, the state is out to go along with every other state in the nation. Passive law in our law is 1-27-1.5. Net reference is paragraph eight, which says these documents are on a basis of need-to-know. As I said, I provided a copy of it. If something catastrophic happens, that's when the plan gets opened up and we discuss it with people who need to know. Otherwise, it's, for lack of a better word, a sacred account. It talks about evacuation, it talks about bomb threats, it talks about all different kinds of things, and how we're going to react to it. And as such, it's not a public document that everybody needs to know. Typically, every year, we, emergency managers, have to update that plan. And typically, since the state runs on the calendar of the year locked over one to September 30th, I've already, I did it last fall for this year, and beginning in October or November, I'll go through and I'll update it for 2019. And at that time, I'll provide Misty with a new copy, a new CD, if there are any changes and whatever. So, I just wanted to make sure you were all aware that those plans are in place. Hazardous materials plans, we're required to have those. Those are available in my office, or if anybody would like that one from the city, I can provide that also. I don't typically print things for people, because they're full of money. But, you know, at the end, if he chooses to have a hard copy of the one, that, that's okay. You can go ahead and print it off, make it by yourself. Any questions about the plan? No, you're free shot.
I think we appreciate you being here, Frank. From the council's perspective, our representative will be Bill Lukens. And of course, I'll be involved as the mayor. And as you know, Bill has had extensive experience in safety and disaster mitigation, and I've been trained in that area from a military standpoint, too. So, we will be there to help, not get in your way, and just have an opportunity to watch you do your thing during the Vineyard Fire. We appreciate the way that that was handled, and thank you, Frank, for what you do for our community and for the county. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Frank? I have a couple of questions. A lot that you referenced. That was 1-27?
1-27-1.5. And it's paragraph eight.
And is that the South River law?
Yep.
Do you want a copy of that? I have it right here for you. Okay. And then, the local emergency operation plan, that identifies what the expectations of the city is in any particular emergency situation?
It includes not necessarily the responsibilities, but the response criteria, how we're going to handle it, and at that point in time, the city force that will be responsible for different aspects of that will be brought in and pulled. But it primarily identifies all of the responders, and what kind of action we're going to take and how we're going to take it.
Thank you.
Thanks again. And again, we do have some mitigation issues that we, as a city, need to consider. We don't have emergency generators for our water system, which we need to make sure that we're on top of that. We've been working with Black Hills Council of Local Government. Soon as some FEMA money is cleared up, hopefully, we can get a grant to accomplish that. And I would suspect that you would support us in that, Frank.
Yep.
And also, I've noticed around the hills, the community are doing some fire mitigation. I just had a brief conversation with Frank, and I think there's some areas around our community that would deserve that, be looked at, so that we can continue to remain safe and fire-free.
And as I told you, I just received an email one day last week, I think it was Tuesday of last week, from the state. And because the Vineyard Fire was a FEMA declaration, as well as the Legion Lake Fire was a FEMA declaration, there's been money set aside for mitigation work and planning to alleviate some of the messes that we have around. And there again, I talked to Hallie Deperson with Black Hills Council, and she's helped write several of those for Pennington County and the city of Rapid, and so we're going to be working on putting those together. In 2015, we did the Community Wildfire Perfection Plan, the CWPP, and at that point in time, we had interaction with looking at priority areas for mitigation work come in the city, as well as outside of the city, in the buffer areas within a three-mile radius. And we'll probably use that as a starting point to look at what we can and cannot do. And of course, you get into private ground versus public ground, and you've got to get all kinds of hoops to jump through in order to be able to do that. But nonetheless, it affords us an opportunity, because that FEMA grant will allow us to be able to put in some defensive spaces so we don't burn a part of the town. We'll be working on that.
Okay, thank you very much, Frank, and we look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any of the council? Thanks again.
Thank you, Frank.
Are there any other communications from the public? Okay, go ahead, please step up to the mic and identify yourself.
Hi, I don't know if this is, what else can we do? Anyway, I came here tonight hoping to save the dog, actually. It kind of goes back to four years ago when the city illegally killed my beloved cat. And the city was a violation of multiple, five, I think, articles, it was actually the exact. Anyway, my concerns is John Wisher, this town animal control officer, and it's my understanding these, to this day, they're still very questionable as far as whether things are being dealt legally. Legally, by the means, when that animal, any animal is taken in possession by the city, they're supposed to be kept for a minimum of three days, minimum, and they're longer than five days. And this is relevant to the dog, but today, also, I just saw another fellow that, yeah, his cat was taken and dispatched the same day, which is violation of the animal control law. Anyway, when I came here tonight before, was actually looking to about a dog, Rigid. I don't know if you're familiar with Rigid or not. And I don't know Rigid or the owner, but working at Ace, there was a flyer on the way down, and it kind of really touched me. And I was talking to Ed Waller today from Arnard Death Planet up there, and this dog did nothing wrong, and it was, I guess, a lady walked by with her dog on a leash, and this dog broke its chain, and the woman's dog, her own dog, I guess, hit her or some other. Anyway, the two parties, neither one had an issue with it. There was no charges filed, and I don't know how John Wisher got involved in it, but the dog has been incarcerated now by the city for three months.
If I could stop you just for a second, you are not dealing with the facts of the case. This will be a matter that will be discussing with the council, and one of the things, and if you've got a specific complaint, I would-
Well, I do.
Excuse me. If you've got a specific complaint, I would ask that you fill a complaint form out, give it to our city administrator, and we'll look into it according to John Richard, Richard. But the dog, Rigid, the episode is under a court order, and we're dealing with the courts. The decision has been made by a judge, and what's going to happen to that dog is dependent upon the actions of its owner. And the facts that have been told around the city are incorrect. I can't discuss the case in detail, but it has been handled legally and through the court system. I assure you, we don't want to put any kind of animal down, but unfortunately, irresponsible owners and our ordinances have to be followed, and they have been.
Well, it's unfortunate because the dog did it during the long hours.
Excuse me.
It was over three months.
We have gone through this legally. You have the facts incorrect. So, I, you know, I just, it just is, you do have the facts incorrect.
Or maybe the city has the facts incorrect. My own dog, Wisher. But thank you for your time, so I'll, I'll-
Can I get your last name for the record, please?
Smut, not Smut.
Thank you.
And if you do have, and the other complaint that you did have concerning the other, I'd ask that you would fill out a complaint form, and we can investigate that and certainly track it down.
And I hear the city-
All for those? Yes. And see the old city administrator.
Will do.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sorry I can't give the details and go through all the details, but we'd probably be here for it.
Well, I was just, I was just hoping to call, you know, maybe use their word, they, you know, help the dog, it's already been three months.
I hear you, so, yeah, I hear you. But we just-
Well, Richard, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other communications from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to personnel actions. And I just want to point out, item E, you may not recognize that name because that individual has not been in hot springs. That was the aquatics director that you approved last week that was scheduled to start on the 11th. And prior, just prior to getting here, she declined the offer of employing her, so that's why that is listed on your personnel actions. I would accept a motion to accept personnel actions A through E.
I'll make a motion to accept personnel actions A through E.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept these personnel actions. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be talking about committee reports, administrative and finance. Bob?
The next administrative and finance, I think it'll be October 1st, City Hall, around 2:00.
Okay, thank you. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
The next airport advisory committee will be Thursday, September 27th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
And the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron is not here tonight. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Marlene?
Ms. Danislaw presented materials regarding the solar panel awning she proposes to install on the front of her store at 7:40 Jennies. Upon discussion and explanation, the commission told her that was in favor of her choice of color panels, and that she should work with Scott Sogi regarding the design of the awning, side pieces and front piece, so that it complemented the historic nature of the district. Mayor Cotty and Mr. Sogi explained the circumstances surrounding the pizza truck. The owners are applying for an extension of their permit, which expired on September 5th. The commission reached agreement with the city that the operators of the pizza truck will submit an application or certificate of appropriateness for the truck and make arrangements for screening or hiding the porta potty and the storage of slightly materials on the property. Application for signage for Moccasin Springs was presented and explained by Ms. Dagan. Application for windows for Moccasin Springs was presented and explained by Ms. Hagan. Application for signage for Buffalo Dream Restaurant at Moccasin Springs was presented and explained by Ms. Dagan. Former vote confirming, an email vote on 104 North Chicago Side, taken upon motion of Hagan, seconded by Mueller, with unanimous approval. Application for a garage at 802 Elms presented. Application for a garage at 327 South Dakota Street. The agenda item regarding the lighting of the statue sign was resolved when it was pointed out that the lighting was by spotlight and not by the light box of the sign fixture. Mayor Cotty discussed the status of the 385 project and the sidewalks. Mr. Sogi briefly reported to the commission on the status of the purchase of a building at 311 North River Street and the owner's plans for the building. The commission supports the economic development of the historic district. The next meeting will be October, the first Wednesday of October, which is the third.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. Appreciate it. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
The next Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will be this Thursday at Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Marty is not here tonight. Planning and zoning commission, Allison?
Planning and zoning will meet this Wednesday at 7:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bill?
Public Safety will meet this Wednesday, the 19th, at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. And Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on September 11th, 3 months at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Mr. President, Brad, Kim, Tracy, and myself. We have several business signings that we're still following. Houston Avenue, the Sur project, as you came to the Miller Center, hopefully, you saw some signs in place, that contractors getting wrapped up for that. There's some materials on site. I hope it's a month, two months down the road, we'll be saying that it's up and all is solid work in fine. The project has finally begun for us. The brush pile landfill, one of your agenda items, is a solid waste management grant for your consideration. The water and sewer rates that we've been talking about, given Tracy, you're working on water rate adjustments. As part of that package, we'll also be looking at an amendment to, of course, an amendment changing some of the wording of the sewer ordinance to eliminate sunset laws on improvements. Flood wall repairs, we talked about the request for a proposal for that. Feeling is that should probably be broken up into two requests for proposals, one for joint repair, and one for the actual repair of the flood wall itself. The roof repairs, the council approved here a while back. Work has begun on the Evans Plunge Station. And under new business, Conrad Signs has agreed to perform some work under warranty on the three City of Hot Springs signs at each of the city's entrances, and also the sign in Kenny Springs. We just called up both four signs that they're going to be taking care of under warranty. The next Public Works meeting will be September 25th, at 3:00 at City Hall.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add to that, Ray?
No.
Thanks. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty is not here tonight to give a report as far as the Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee. We met the 10th of September, briefly discussed what is the raise of golf fees, it seems to be 3%, with the card store age will be somewhat larger. There were some concerns expressed about the potential of losing revenue as the course itself closes for events like cross-country meets and that sort of thing, and also concern about the damage to the course. Jason, the superintendent, did console the committee that the upcoming cross-country meets would not try to ensure that they don't put down a paint that will kill the grass to mark the course, and the upcoming strider bike race course is being designed to avoid major areas of play on the golf course. There were some questions raised about the punch cards, and we reiterate the policy that those punch cards are, punch cards for rounds of golf are good only for the year that they're issued. And as a result of the meeting, I've asked Kim and Misty to get with the clubhouse management to ensure that we're maximizing our potential for profits in the clubhouse. That summarizes the main items that we discussed at the advisory committee. Ron is not here for the fire department. Comprehensive plan, Sam?
We have not celebrated our next meeting yet. We'll have an update for that pretty soon.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on in the agenda. The next item will be our ordinances. You have before you the ordinance 1191, which is our 2019 appropriation ordinance or our budget. Again, we discussed this in detail at the last council meeting. I remind everyone in the public that we do have a structurally balanced budget for 2019. You all through the first reading of the ordinance. I believe there's been no changes recommended, Misty?
No.
Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1191.
I'd make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1191, 2019 appropriation ordinance.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 1191. Are there any discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
Marlene Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Allison Ritter-Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance is approved. We do have an operating budget for 2019. And again, I want to thank you, council, for the extra time that you spent in going through each of the items, and I want to thank Misty and Kim and the department heads for their work in accomplishing this budget from the bottom up. And I think it is a good way that we went about making our plan for the new year. We also have before you the second reading of ordinance 1192. This is the franchise for Golden West Cable Vision Incorporated. You have, that did, first reading did pass. Have there been any recommended changes, Misty, that you see?
No.
I would ask then for a motion to approve the second reading of 1192.
As a reminder, the findings need to be read.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1192 on ordinance granting a franchise to Golden West Cable Vision Inc. to construct and maintain a cable communication system in the City of Hot Springs. I'll second it.
Okay, and the motion, Allison, to be proper, we have to read the findings listed there on the-
I have the ordinance. We don't have it from the last meeting.
Starting here at the grantees, okay, here we go. The grantees' technical ability, financial condition, legal qualifications and character were considered and proven in a full public meeting after due notice and reasonable opportunity to be heard. Grantees' plans for constructing, upgrading and operating the system were considered and found adequate and feasible in a full public meeting after due notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard. The franchise granted to the grantee by the city complies with the existing applicable state and federal- state and federal laws and regulations of the franchise. The grant to, grant, and the franchise granted to grantee is non-exclusive. A roll call vote was taken. All members voted in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Misty, for ensuring that we did that legally and proper. I will now accept a second to that.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 1192. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. Misty, I'd ask you to take the role, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. Moving on in the agenda, the item A under resolution 2018-16 is a resolution to set the rates at Southern Hills Golf Course for the 2019 year. You do have a list of those rates in front of you. As I mentioned before, the Golf Course Committee recommended a three percent increase in all the rates. And the admin and finance also went along with the superintendent's recommendation that we raise the storage fees a little bit more than the three percent. Those rates are listed in your package. I'd accept a motion to approve resolution, resolution 2018-16.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-16, a resolution to set the rates at Southern Hills Golf Course for the 2019 year.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to set those rates. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You also have before you resolution 2018-17. And what we're trying to do is apply for a D E N R grant to take care of the brush pile in our maintenance facility. And I'm going to ask that this motion be amended, or this resolution be amended. We have, the way it's written and the way D E N R is looking at giving this grant, they're not specifying the exact percentage of match that the city would have to pay and the exact percentage to, what would be the grant award. And so we feel it's important that we have a counterbalance or a way that they don't suddenly come across and say they'll pay one percent or ten percent and then we'd have to pay the other ninety-nine percent or under ninety percent. So I would ask that that be amended to include council approval in the, I think it's the third paragraph in. So I'd accept a motion to apply for that D E N R solid waste grant with the amended language.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-17, a resolution to apply for D E N R solid waste grant for green waste pile processing with the following amendment. Let the folks take a look at the resolution. The first, therefore be it further resolved, is, where are we, goes the amendment? So it would therefore be it further resolved that the mayor of Hot Springs be authorized to execute and sign the solid waste management program grant application and if awarded, this is the petition, and approved by the council, the grant agreement on behalf of the city and... So the petition is captured by the city council as the mayor was talking about.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended resolution 2018-17. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, this is hopefully our ticket to keep from having to burn all that question. New business, item A, we're looking at a possible motion in discussion to accept a thirty thousand gallon propane pre-buy. That would be from Dakota Propane at one dollar and nineteen cents per gallon. You should have a sheet in your package. You can see the other propane, local propane companies that were contacted and you'll see that Dakota Propane was indeed the low bid quote. I'd accept a motion to accept that pre-buy quote.
I'll make a motion to accept the thirty thousand gallon propane pre-buy quote and approve 2018 to 2019 contract from Dakota Propane at a dollar nineteen per gallon.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that propane quote. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have before side of B, a discussion and possible motion to approve Kettle Forsterson as our auditor for the 2018 audit. Before taking that motion, I just asked, Misty, our finance officer, is this something that you would recommend, having worked with them prior?
Absolutely.
We'd accept a motion at this time to approve Ms. Kettle Forsterson as our auditor.
I'll make a motion to approve Kettle Forsterson, LLP, to complete 2018 audit services at a cost of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars plus two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per major federal program.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Kettle Forsterson as our auditor at the cost identified. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? And Misty, how many federal, major federal programs are we dealing with?
I believe we're only anticipating one, although if we accept any federal dollars in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there'll be others. So if there's any airport improvement grants approved by the end of the year and we expend those dollars...
Okay, so that should be a pretty constant cost. Obviously, this is an important aspect of our financial fiduciary responsibility. Are there any other questions and comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, we have a possible motion in discussion to allow me as mayor to sign the state water plant application for possible sewer expansion into the second Minnacott addition from North Twenty-third to North Twenty-sixth Street. And again, the reason this is, this is not an indication that we obviously or necessarily are going to do this work, but we need to get that work on the state water plan if we are to qualify for state and state grants and loan assistance. And what made this possible was the water improvement requests that we've got in that area back behind the state home. We found that we can use a rock saw to cut the ditches that we would need to put this sewage system in, and it's made it feasible for development. And the state has expressed an interest in seeing that project done. So that's the reason this motion is here and I wanted you to understand that. So I'd accept the, us, the motion to allow us to apply and put that project on the state water plant.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the state water plant application for the possible sewer expansion into the second Minnacott addition from North Twenty-third to North Twenty-sixth Street. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this project going on, the state water plant application. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a motion to allow me as mayor to sign the state water plant application for the Highway 385 eighteen water replacement, water and sewer line replacement. Again, we're doing that in conjunction with the fee adjustment briefing that we got last time to ensure that we can possibly obtain, obtain some state funding or grants for completing these very, very expensive projects. Accept a motion to approve that, this lot placing this on the state water plant.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the state water plant application for the replacement of water and sewer service along North River Street between Nation and Jennings Avenue as part of this SD 385 DOT reconstruction project.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments or discussion?
Should be National.
National.
It didn't say National, so I'll just declare a petition.
Okay.
I was under, when he spoke to us last time, he said that there would have to be a change in the fee to qualify for some of this grant information. So how is that in correlation to what we're looking at here?
Okay, there's, there's two things. One of the things, the state has a water plant that they look at and they determine priorities of what projects rate very high. And that also improves our ability to get grants and loan, lower the loan rate funding based on the priority. But those projects have to be on the list to be eligible for that, that color of money. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have before you item E, we have some information in your package, a possible motion in discussion to move forward with the acceptance of a land exchange offer from Don Olstad for the lot next to the armory for some property on Canton Avenue, corner lot. And you should, you do have description of that in your packages. Now let's, before we make the motion, I just want to give a little bit of background. As you know, previously, the council had developed a workforce housing plan. Both of these lots were under consideration in that, that housing plan. The armory lot has an adjacent piece of property that a butts, property line, a butts right up to the armory. And if we were to have to either tear the armory down or use it to make affordable housing out of, if someone were to make condominiums or apartments out of the armory as it exists, it would be very difficult for them to gain access to that property because there's not the, the property line is right on the boundary line. Land swaps are something that are legal. They're allowed by South Dakota law. I know Misty's done the research. This is, what we're doing tonight is not agreeing to the, to the swap, but agreeing to begin the process. And the process would involve either appointing three non-interested parties as appraisers that have some expertise in that, or hiring a certified appraiser to look at both parcels and come up with a value for that, that, each of those properties. And then we would replat, have to do some replating, some surveying and so forth. I believe the process involves a public hearing and a legal review and then finally council approval. And I don't know if I forgot anything, Misty, but...
There'd be a contract present as well.
And it'd be a contract that would have to be written with Mr. Don and his wife to make that take place. And what we're agreeing to tonight is simply to start that process. And we feel it's beneficial both to the city. I know Mr. Olstad has been very open with his purpose for doing it, of building some elderly housing. And you say, well, how does that affect workforce housing? Well, if, if somebody elderly that would be, for example, he uses the example of his mother, would be interested in moving into a smaller facility, that would free up an affordable house for workforce housing that's in good shape, established in the neighborhood and so forth. Plus, we would still have the remainder of the Canton property as an opportunity to still construct the workforce housing on. And then the other part of, the other benefit to the city is the armory lot then would have the parcel of land which we need to have if there is going to be any development on that as a access for sewage line. Otherwise, we would have to install an expensive drainage station. So with that explanation of why we, why this motion is before you, I would ask for a motion to move forward with the acceptance of that land exchange.
I'll make a motion to move forward with acceptance of land exchange offer from Don Olstad, lot next to Armory for Canton Avenue, corner lot, expanded from eighty to ninety feet.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the, to move forward with the acceptance of that land exchange offer. Are there any questions or comments or discussion?
I have some questions. Are we still considering opening up an RFP for that Canton Avenue?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we're changing, what would potentially be changed then is the RFP with the corner taken out of it?
Yes.
And is there any concern regarding, I guess, I guess I have a concern regarding if we're, a lot of the discussion regarding planning and zoning was opening that area up to make sure that the builders have any, all possible, I guess, aspects to be able to build on there and do whatever they needed without having any blockage at all. And I'm wondering if a builder's coming through and wanting to build a specific duplex or level of home and that other housing is not matching that, if it's going to deter our, our RFP for construction?
You know, I, I don't think we can definitively answer that. I know there's up to about four lots that would remain for workforce, workforce housing depending on the design of the homes. Again, we put out an RFP, got no interest. We're hoping that the building of some kind would stimulate some, some interest and certainly those other lots would be available for workforce housing.
And so when are we considering this other RFP? So, so what I'm saying is I feel like we might be a little, we might want to do the RFP to make sure that there's not anybody that's interested in the whole area first. Don might want to speak to me about this, I'm sure. But that was one of the things that we talked to planning and zoning many times, about making sure that we are creating as many houses as we can. And I just wonder about, Don, come up, what, what are you thinking as far as sizes go? And do you think it's going to affect a builder wanting to build that, something that you had talked about kind of, you know, a number of times?
Right. Well, the thing is, we got no response.
Right.
I'm not real enthusiastic about the next go around. The people that we target are extremely busy in other areas, so it doesn't make a lot of sense for them to come here to do this at this time. But I can change. We're hoping that the planning stage, most of these construction guys are extremely busy yet. So the thought is, if we get it out fall, November, they can work on it. So the thought is, if we get it out fall, November, they can work on it this winter and hopefully hit the ground running next spring. Now, that may or may not happen. There's been some concern expressed that we should have divided the lots. If you go back through the P&amp;Z process, when we did this, it's been a long time ago, that we split that lot into four eighty-foot path blocks, three hundred and twenty feet long. We split it into four eighty-foot lots just because, I mean, there was no plan. The city was in the process of selling property, excess property, to have the auction and did some of that. And we split it just to make it more feasible to sell it in, a lot of the lots in Hot Springs are twenty-five footers, aren't built. So we replatted that section with eighty footers with no real plan, other than maybe the city would just offer four eighty-foot lots for sale to be part of the auction. Then the RFP, the housing study came through, decided to pull back those lots, in conjunction that Armory lots also are in that conversation, because you've got a whole stretch there that would work out. Most of these are workforce housing lots, they're about fifty foot wide, which is the minimum hot springs you can build on. They're long and narrow. If you look at the projects that have happened, suits that. Back to the thing about splitting the lots, we didn't do it because I felt we gave the developer, the builder, the opportunity to take a clean slate and divide them the way they wanted to.
Right.
And then the city was going to put the utilities in according to that plating. Well, now we're having this conversation that maybe we need to go ahead and divide the lots. We can divide them intelligently with our groups to make them portable and usable. And then the city can put the utilities in. It may come to a situation, we've talked about this at P&amp;Z and through the finance meeting, we may want to offer these two individuals a lot if they come in and decide to do that. The mechanism on how you would do that, I don't know. But people can qualify for a governor's home, it's a very well-built home, and they could come in individually, do a lot. So we need to step up probably and divide the lots to make that happen, rather than have somebody come in and say, okay, I want four, five lots. There's probably five potentially there before this came up. I originally bought the lot at Armory, driving by it, knew the Armory thing had been settled. There was some legal action with the city and whatever, and that was one piece of property originally. And when that happened, they drew a line right against the building and kept the empty piece. The city, I just can't imagine how that happened, it shouldn't have happened. Because that is the access, the utilities come out of that building, come right across the lot. So I thought, I'll buy it, maybe the city will need it at some point, but nothing else, maybe I'll build on it. Well, then when the RFP didn't happen up there, I kind of went, this is an opportunity for the city to put the property back together in the Armory without spending any money that they weren't going to do anyway. I'll just trade it for the lot. And the city would still need to go ahead and put the water and sewer in, just like they were good on the RFP. You could consider this as part of the RFP, you could consider this as part of your housing plan, because the housing plan clearly indicated that if we could take some people out of these single-family homes and move them into something else, that we create that affordable workforce housing by letting buy those existing homes. So it fits in that. I've been very sensitive to the character of the neighborhood and the RA zoning that I've been on both sides of this deal. I've been in areas where they tried to put businesses in residential areas, I've been against it, I had poles in the pass by the school, there's a duplex north of the school that I did that was going to be a threeplex. That doesn't fit into an RA. We came to the variance here, and I thought we had it all set. We got in one of these meetings like this and turn around and the crowd was there and they were pissed. Never happened. That's why it's a duplex. Duplex has fit into RA's. Very aware of the setbacks that would be going, that they'd be asking for, would be no different than if you put a house in there. So the neighbors are not going to be affected. I personally believe the Armory lots are better lots across the street from the library and park. I have some reservations about going up in the trailer park.
I can understand that. So the other thing I was, just wanting to question is, why didn't it come through planning and zoning? I was surprised to see that, because the Canton lot has been something that's been talked about for like a year, it's a big topic area in planning and zoning. So then I was surprised to see it here and not through planning and zoning first.
Well, I think that I was instructed to take it too. We're not dividing again, and now we would be dividing. So that would probably have to move through P&amp;Z.
It has to go through P&amp;Z.
For approval, if we decide to take those lots, and we are going to be subdividing it potentially to four lots into probably five. So that will have to come through P&amp;Z.
So it's not even going to be a discussion again at planning zoning as far as how that would zone out if he took it, if the land swap happened and how we can make an appropriate RFP take place as far as planning all that out?
I would, I would hope that this is kind of with the RFP. I think this is part of, it's still in your plan. I'm not asking to take it out of the plan, I'm just, I'm just switching lots.
Right.
I think the Armory will be in this discussion too.
It's coming.
So I'm just like, you know.
Any other questions or comments? Did you get, your answers?
And I would, I know. You guys run a nice meeting, by the way, that's why I've been this way at the city a lot. Allison, it's, I can't say for a hundred percent I'm going to do this, but I can't tell you for a hundred percent what I'm going to do at the Armory lot. Okay? By the time I go through, do the elements and everything, see if it really works, makes some sense, it kind of makes some sense to me, I've got forty-two years' experience doing this, so I've got some kind of an idea, but whether or not I want to fight into this. But it's no different. If, for some reason it doesn't happen, there's just another lot for sale, a little different than the one you have down at the Armory.
Okay, but then if you decide not to build on it and there's a chunk that the RFP is not discussing, or, you know, keeps out of it, then it really, again, changes the opportunity to have somebody come in and do it.
But you just have the same problem over at the Armory right now, when you move to that one, you already own that.
Right.
And I, so I'm just switching the location, I think the prob, I don't think they even changed it. And I wasn't really in love with doing it, I mean, I'm offering back, I consider the value of what it paid for, you're happy with it. I don't think that's necessarily true to change. But I'm also basing it on what the city offered in the RFP at those values. So I think it's fair exchange for the city, and actually it works out as the numbers go. As you can see, it's probably a little better at the city side.
And again, I just remind, we're not voting to approve price land swap, but we're voting to begin the process to, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and so then I was writing down what was happening, but it's not going through planning zoning though. Even if we approve it now, it'll go through a public hearing here, but not through planning zoning.
If it gets approved after it goes through the public hearing and it goes through the assessments and stuff like that, if it gets finally approved, then it will go through and, we'll definitely see it again.
Well, I just want to make sure that planning zoning has their say on this, because the Canton Avenue has been something that's been discussed for a year plus on planning zoning, and so I was really curious to know what their input was in regarding this and what they see the RFP looking like. So that's where I stand on that.
And Allison, I don't think that, you know, being, playing with planning zoning as we are, that they're aware of really where we're going. The city is the one that's kind of made this determination that maybe we need to go back and revisit it, and maybe we need to division on the lots. And that's when this kind of clicked with me to go, maybe we should trade.
And that's where I felt a little lost in translation that we jumped, and that's what I wasn't following, that we made a jump, that we went from what we were talking in planning zoning to where we're at now, and there was no kind of continuation on how we'd gone here.
I think there'll be continuation. I think, are we okay?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. You always keep it straight.
Full time. There's been no reason why planning zoning can't continue to talk about it as we move forward with this act if we determine.
But what if they, and if they come back with a different recommendation, then it will come in front of the council that a different recommendation was made.
Well, yeah, you guys have final say on everything P&amp;Z does anyway.
I just wanted to make sure I understood the steps, that how it was going to go forward from here.
Good discussion, thank you. Allison, go ahead.
If this comes to fruition and it makes sense for many parties, when, you talk about building two duplexes, when?
When will you get the water and sewer done?
As soon as we have the plan.
I mean, that's what it's going to be, that's going to be the deal.
Okay, so the city gets it done, then are you looking at, you know, beginning construction in a month, six months, a year?
I think by the time we move through this process, I'll be lucky if it's March.
Okay.
Is that fair?
That's fair, and it's certainly sooner compared to how long we've been doing this.
It's a lot longer, it's a lot sooner than if I try to do something at the Armory lot and put something next to that building.
Yeah.
Because that's going to be disastrous for both of us.
I have another question, of course. Regarding the Armory, this is not necessarily for you, but for the Armory, what are we looking for the long term if we have the land swap? Are we looking at another RFP there, or?
I can't really discuss that right now, I've been looking at a couple of different options.
Okay.
So that's going to be.
That's coming up, okay.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
I'd just like to say that when we look at the number that Don has given us, I think, you know, we'd like to move forward with the discussion and see if it makes sense and have a public hearing, see if there's any opposition or if there's any support. Looking at his lots, using the price that he bought it at, it was twenty thousand dollars for that property, the city lot based on the RFP sixteen eight seventy-five, so the city's actually taking a little bit of money just doing the swap. I would certainly like to see something start going on with that property over there. You know, if they ever start constructing, maybe some other folks will say, the city serves it, they want to see homes of the, the Armory lots, getting that whole lot back in the city's hands so that we provide the easement, that building should need to come down, we just have more control over that lot if we own it in its entirety rather than owning the upper half of it. So moving forward with the discussion, I think that makes perfect sense and see where it takes us.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, very good discussion, I'd ask, then all those in favor of moving forward with the exception, acceptance of the land exchange offer from Don Ostad, the lot next to the Armory for the Canton corner lot, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Don, I thank you again for being here, thank you for putting forth the new bold idea, and we'll see where it takes us. Moving on to item F, we have a discussion, possible motion to approve a compact for the glider hangar rental to the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. I'd accept a motion to approve that contract for glider rental.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract for glider, glider hangar rental, Hot Springs Municipal Airport.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that contract for the glider rental, right, glider hangar rental. Are there any questions, comments? And I do believe we have a glider pilot that has some comments. Are you a Marty?
I am. I'm Marty Larson from Round City. I'm secretary of the Glider Club. Thank you, thanks for calling up from here. I would just ask at this point, we really haven't had a time, any time to take a look at the contract and talk about it and discuss some of the changes that the city's looking for. At this point, I just kind of ask for it to be tabled for the next one, and maybe give us a chance to talk about it. I don't know if we want to do it at your schedule or whether we want to do it at the advisory board meeting, but I would just ask for it to lay in at this point, if that's possible. And we've already paid our, just so we all, we've already paid our rent through the end of the year, so we're kind of committed to it, we're not, we're not thinking about bailing on the contract or anything, so.
Okay, Bill, I would ask you as our representative for the airport committee, do you, do you have any problem in tabling this and discussing it further with the Glider Club at the next advisory board meeting?
No, I agree with you, table it and discuss it at the meeting this month. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the, other comments from the council that you weren't bent on getting this approved tonight?
Do we need Sam to amend his original motion since there is a motion to approve it?
I'll amend my motion to table this item until the next meeting, or, two meetings from now? What are we designing?
It should be the next meeting.
The next meeting, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we tabled item F, and pending discussion at the next airport advisory meeting. Are there any further discussion or comments concerning this? If not, all those in favor of tabled, enabling this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The last item on the agenda is approve a travel request with Chief Close to attend Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee Conference in Sioux Falls. I'd accept a motion to approve that conference and travel.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel request from Chief of Police Mike Close to attend the Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee Conference in Sioux Falls, South Dakota from November five, two thousand eighteen until November seven, two thousand eighteen. Second motion?
It's been moved and seconded to approve this travel request. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Misty, can you give us a finance officer report, please?
Thank you for moving Cato Ford Simpson to do our two thousand eighteen audit. I've worked with them since I started as both accounting support and then our auditors when they were done providing that support. They've been wonderful to work with, so I appreciate that. I was less than a four percent increase than we had years past, so I believe nineteen thousand five hundred is what it was for the last two years, and so moving it up to twenty thousand two hundred fifty is a very small increase. I am still looking for feedback on our grant policy. I asked for that at the last meeting, hadn't heard anything, so it's not on this agenda. Would like to have something passed before the end of the year, but we're not in a hurry. So if you have any questions about what I'm looking for, I'd love to go over it with you. I have worked since the last meeting to create three new pay controls in our payroll processing system. They'll be effective for the next pay period. That includes an increase to our on-call pay, an increased call-out pay, and an implement weather closure pay. So I was able to get those pay controls created, and we're ready to make those effective in need be of the next pay period. I will be out of the office on the twenty-seventh of September for Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association meeting in Sturgis. I serve as the vice president of this association, so it's important that I attend these quarterly meetings. We did discuss the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Wellness and Product Management position that's still open. There was, the reason the position was declined had nothing to do with the pay or the job, just that another position was accepted by this individual, so we're still looking. We will be discussing an additional or new position, a part-time library position at the next admin finance meeting. We'll be discussing where the funding for that part-time library position will come from, and that may be on your next council agenda. So if you have questions or want to see some of the moves for that, please plan on attending that meeting. If more than four of our council members plan on attending that meeting, I can do a notice of form, so please let me know. It will be October first at one PM at City Hall. As with most items, funding is the issue. We have plenty of people to do all the things and complete all kinds of projects if funding wasn't an issue. It's always a challenge, but we need to ensure the integrity of our public funds, and it's a big job balancing needs and wants, and finding the funding is something that we may be able to do, but it may take from somewhere else. We'll be certifying the tax levy to the county auditor, now we've had our second reading of the twenty nineteen corporation ordinance. There was a late change to that dollar amount, which would have increased our levy by four hundred dollars, but we chose not to add that because it would have taken another first reading next year, hopefully we can get, has to do with the publicly assessed utilities. Hopefully we can get those numbers prior to our first reading next year, because every dollar counts. I don't mean to make light of four hundred dollars, but we did not want to postpone the second reading to accept that this year. We will be working on our wine and liquor license renewals for November, as well as the special assessment rolls. Those need to be certified with the county auditor for two thousand nineteen collection. And right now, we have our back nine special assessments and our Boulder Falls special assessments. We'll work on those payments and get those certified to the county auditor for collection by the November deadline. On today... Uh, today, the finance office was lucky to receive an additional $2,050 in DARE donations from our community. I'd like to thank Shockful for donating $1,500, Cascade Chiropractic for $50, and NASA Dental for $500, and I sent that out to all council members so you can see that. Uh, as of this time, our DARE program is fully funded for the next year. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Miss P. A lot going on. Kim, can you give us an update on, from the city administration, please?
Sure. Um, we're obviously, we're working on, um, the details associated with an RFP for our workforce housing, going to a meet and greet tomorrow in Custer. Uh, they're having a, uh, a workforce housing meeting as well. I'm going to kind of see what they're up to, um, see what kind of resources they have and, uh, talk to some people there to, to kind of compare and contrast what we've been told and what they have going. We also have a, I've been working with a composite manufacturing company in New York regarding the possibility of using their product to lessen the cost for a kind of cantilevered sidewalk as part of our highway plan. I've got to put together a full project, um, summary for them so that they can adequately determine whether their system would work under our certain six circumstances. So I'm in the process of doing that. Tracy and I are working together on the state water plan applications. Uh, they can be pretty lengthy and they require a lot of text associated with that. Also working on the Pete Leen and Sons addendum. I think I've got, I've been hitting this one piecemeal in between different jobs and I've got, I think, the, uh, draft of the addendum pretty close that we'll be able to start reviewing that, um, and then talking with Pete Leen and Sons on, um, their concurrence. Uh, they also have some sections that we need to look at, so, uh, we'll probably have some group meetings on that, get something that we like, make sure that the attorneys are okay with it, and then bring it before the council. Also working on the final completion of the comprehensive plan. I know, uh, Sam and I have been kind of dancing around this one for a while. Uh, it's just another one that keeps sneaking into the cracks wherever I get a chance to put my hand on it. I try and finish that out, so I'd still like to get that done by the end of the year. It's been hanging over our head for a while. Just to keep you up to date on some things around town, the King of the Rings, uh, and cannibal contests are at, at Evans Plunge this Saturday. Free dump week starts on Monday. Monday, Thursday, and Friday are, uh, eight o'clock starts for that. Two, um, Tuesday and Wednesday are 11 o'clock starts so that it closes later so that people who have standardized jobs can actually go there and participate afterward. Uh, tire recycling is still, uh, starting at the beginning of October. Check with the Edgemont landfill on when you can drop off your tires there for free. Um, it's an important project, but we're no longer going to be taking tires and then moving them for you from the, the city. That was, uh, a service that we offered last spring and it was used by businesses, so, um, you can take them straight down to Edgemont at this point. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks again. A lot of things happen here and, uh, we just want to give, uh, as far as my update, uh, a couple of things. First of all, uh, I just want to, uh, highlight the importance of, uh, you know, what our golf course means to the community. Just kind of an anecdotal incident that happened to me as I was making one of my thorough inspections of each of the 18 holes out there. I happened to join up with a young man, an Air Force veteran. He came from Rapid City and, uh, he's, uh, just raved about the course, the condition of the course. He said there was just a couple of courses in the hills that he plays at and Hot Springs was his favorite. But the interesting thing that he commented, he said that he and his friends were looking at maybe purchasing a, a house down here in Hot Springs so that they would have, uh, access to the golf course on weekends without having to, to drive back and forth. And this was during the week that, uh, I did, did play with him. And I think, uh, you know, we've got to keep that in mind. One of the things that, uh, we're working very hard and I really appreciate the admin finance and also the golf course committee, uh, we're raising the rates 3%. That 3% increase should keep us competitive with other courses in the hills, uh, but we also need to, uh, keep bringing that money into the coffers. I know one of the things that Jason is interested in is, uh, doing a, a more comprehensive capital improvement plan, things like, uh, keeping that water system modernized, uh, so that he can save, uh, more money on manpower. And of course, I think we can do a better job perhaps on the way we manage and what we offer at the clubhouse. So we'll be looking at things like that. The other, uh, big, uh, part of Hot Springs, it's been a part of Hot Springs for a long time, is Evans Plunge. And again, it looks like we've had a very successful summer. It remains a very, uh, popular attraction for tourists, uh, and it serves our community year-round. We've gone through some iteration. The volunteers, uh, that, uh, really supported the plunge early on have really helped get, uh, started in making some basic repairs and getting that, uh, facility updated as it's needed. And I really appreciate the advisory committee and the inputs that they've made, but we've got to look to the future and, uh, examine opportunities to increase our profitability at the plunge. And so, uh, at the last meeting, the advisory board, uh, gave me the green light to go ahead and contact or try to contract, contact someone that might be able to come and give us some assistance in, uh, developing a future plan. I got ahold of an individual by the name of Steve Beckley from Glenwood Springs, Colorado, and he runs an adventure cave there, uh, and an Iron Mountain Spa. And he just recently, uh, completed that spa and it's doing very successful. A very excited young man that, uh, appears eager to come and, and share some of his knowledge with us. So we'll be setting up a, uh, appointment sometime this fall as then slow down for him and, uh, having him come to Hot Springs and hopefully we can look at, uh, at ways that we can increase, uh, perhaps, uh, the functions at the plunge. And certainly we don't want to destroy the, the historic nature, but we, uh, we certainly would, uh, even possibly look at some kind of public-private partnership with a spa or something like that. I, I'm not saying that that will happen, but I think it's something that we need to, to look at because, uh, it's an opportunity for us to, uh, keep, uh, growing, uh, the bottom line at our, uh, our plunge. Again, it's been a busy summer. We've had a lot of projects going on, as you can tell, from Public Works and Safety Airport and all of the different things. One of the things I do want to highlight, uh, I had an opportunity to gain today to go look at the almost, I guess, 99% complete, uh, Fall River Freedom Trail expansion to Chautauqua Park. And, uh, our city crews did a fantastic job. Uh, it is very, uh, attractive to have it protected off from, uh, vehicle traffic with some large vultures and, uh, it just fits in very, very nicely. And I really wanted a shout out to our city crews for the job that they, they did and, um, Kim, uh, uh, we're going to have a new ribbon cutting, I think, soon and we'll soon to get that, uh, information out because I think it's something that we as a community can, can celebrate that, that we did in-house. One of the things that, uh, we discussed at the Historic Commission is, uh, as Harleen mentioned, is the cantilevered sidewalk and not so much the scientific and, uh, structural aspects of it, what needs to be done, but, uh, is just the road construction itself is going to be something that we need to prepare for as a business community and, uh, many of the people on the Historic Commission are, have businesses downtown. And, uh, I think, uh, probably sooner than later, we need to begin, uh, planning to ensure that the world knows that Hot Springs is still open for business even if we are involved in a major construction project. And, uh, it's easy enough, uh, to pass our community because we're just, uh, about a few inches on the map, too far from Mount Rushmore. And, uh, so we have to work a little harder to get here. And I think we need to look at, uh, banding with the chamber, our downtown businesses. Do we do show services? We certainly need an advertising campaign and coordination with the Department of Transportation. We want to look at schedules, access to parking and so on, um, and how they schedule the construction. So I just want to, uh, you know, keep you apprised as a council and, uh, as people come and, and talk to you about that, that's something that I think we need to start ensuring starts happening sooner than later that we begin looking at ways we can, uh, ensure that people know that Hot Springs will be open during that time. Because if we don't, uh, our businesses will suffer. We've had a, a boom in businesses this summer, uh, downtown, and, uh, certainly if our businesses suffer, our bottom line revenue, revenue as a city, uh, suffers also. So encourage you to, to, to look at that. And at this time, uh, I would accept a motion to go into executive session for the.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Your law 12252 is legal.
And it's moved and seconded that we go into executive session. Mary, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and there, uh, will be no decision afterwards.
Hi, I have just.
We're out of executive session at 8:54. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. They moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.